Tech@bangorSchools.net. I'm going to put the order in order. Welcome, everybody, and let's stand for the buzzer. Thank you, and recognition?
We are not having the recognition tonight. The coach is unable to attend, and he wanted to be here. Actually, he's attending his daughter's recognition. So he has to pick a way until the next one.
Excellent. We look forward to that tremendous work of the track and field team and the coaches. Are there any adjustments to the agenda?
So obviously, I need to remove the recognition. But I also need to add PCHC School-Based Health Clinic update. And I need to add an administrator nomination. I'm sorry. So under the PCHC, that's D2V. And the administrator nomination is E1CV.
Interesting.
So move second.
All those in favor? Do we have any public comments? I do not see Matt coming in, so I think I am ready to move on from that.
Why was the door locked?
Oh, we're trying. We will let you in, Mark. No, okay, no public comments? Excellent, thank you. Thank you, Dana. So while we allow one of our committee members into the building, we're going to move on to superintendent's proposals and updates. Action items, Dr. Hesler?
So I am recommending school committee support for nationwide litigation. The France Law Group of San Francisco and Drummond Woods in Maine is suing against Jewel Lab and Altria, also known as Philip Morris, for promoting vaping among minors. They are seeking adjunctive relief to stop marketing to minors, provide normal warnings on products, and not allow flavor pods. Bangor's participation would be as a school having to deal with the vaping fallout, such as underage smoking, increased tobacco dependency in minors. There would be no depositions or court appearances. Legal fees would be taken away from any financial recovery. If there is no financial recovery, then there would be no legal fees. Their fee would be 20% if settled in six months, 25% after six months. Typical fees are 40%. Should the Bangor School Department receive any financial payout, it would go to the general fund. Board approval is needed. I would recommend the Bangor School Department's participation as a plaintiff in the Mass Action Lawsuit against Jewel Labs Incorporated and to authorize the superintendent to take the necessary action for the Bangor School Department to file claims in the Mass Action lawsuit. And I did provide you with documentation so that you could better see what it was all about. It's really what they're trying to do is have schools promote why vaping is bad.
I need a motion?
So move second.
And any discussion? Member Hyatt?
Yes. Guess I have a chair. Yeah, I have a chair. I don't know. Seems like we live in a society where something is promoted, you know, or something, and then here that's overall, you know, we have them. I know when Vaping first came out, it was, you know, I'll be most with. Say that's the Vaping. I don't know how old the level this. I mean, I give it context. I mean, uncover, we call it law. So given this, I'm asking, wait, I'm going to wait. I think assuming business is a really bad idea, I would get out of that. There's some of that with my.
Thank you, Member Hyatt. Are there any, is there any other discussion? Okay, seeing none. All those in favor? Those opposed? Thank you. Excellent, so the motion passes. Informational items, Dr. Hesler?
Yes, I have Dana Coverby-Aller here. She is in her first year as the newly formed executive reduction Title IX coordinator at Bangor High School. And she is here this evening just to present the work that she's doing.
Hi, everyone, how are you? Good. It's a good class. I don't even like closer things. I'm doing that. Great, wonderful. I'm so thankful for giving me the opportunity to add my colleagues to better play this new role, new to me and new to Bangor. So I'm really excited to walk me through what I do, like how this role has evolved. Oh, I love that statement. Do I think that's nice to hear? Sure. I'm getting some things in reality, it's not one. So I'm sort of thinking though, how to best explain how this role has evolved since I stepped into it. The way I think best to explain it is sort of these three areas. So obvious first one is doing Title IX affirmative action investigation. P2 is really creating a cooperative environment for communities before we need a resource. And the third is prevention. I think that the best pair of avenues to see is both the proactive and reactive working together. So just to briefly walk you through what these things look like. So the first thing I jumped into as a backup shopping is figuring out the infrastructure and building upon it for discrimination and bias investigation. So the first piece of that is Title IX. So Title IX, I'm sure there will be a massive piece of legislation that became a little bit more complicated. There were new regulations coming to play last August through the Trump administration. So really getting up to speed and helping get the district up to speed in terms of Title IX. So the basic package we're all familiar with is called no person in the United States shall on a basis of that be excluded from participation in my FISA or be subjected to discrimination under an educational program or activity receiving federal financial assistance, i.e. of a school system. So under Title IX, we focus on gender, sex, gender identity, and sexual orientation, basic discrimination. The other end of that is affirmative action. So affirmative action covers every other legal protected class by our own state, which is what our policy in Bangor is. So everything from race, color, gender, religion, equal now, race, color, veterans status, identity status, ethnicity, creed, national origin, religion, ability, disability. So what I essentially do in this role, I was trained under a TESA, which is the Association for Title IX Administrators. I did three levels of training, so coordination, investigation, and advanced administration. And notably, these regulations were massively shifting in the office of helping the other coordinators pay to eight level. I'm taking part of. Additionally, I have developed a network of Title IX and affirmative action investigators within the state, so really creating an avenue for folks to talk through process and procedure. That is to make it so we can find different schools in the state to create planning. In short, what all of this looks like in terms of investigation is really making sure that when we're put on notice, so we mean anyone in the school community of potential discrimination, we have an obligation to stop that harassment, prevent the reoccurring, and really write the end of that. Regardless of being in the middle or the end of the investigation. So another piece of what I've been doing is really creating avenues for staff and students to understand the process, to look to me as their resource, have better avenues of working. Another big piece of that is developing streamlined templates and training across the district. So the next piece of this, and all of these sort of screenshots things are different examples of things that I was very quick about. I kind of leave all these with you as well and habits with them. Did you ever get that helpful? The other piece of what I've been really committed to is the community supporting responsiveness. So I drove in pretty immediately to creating different professional development opportunities, most notable being this guy right here. So this was on April 19th. We had a day-long professional development training for Bangor High School staff. Another opportunity is to look like I'm determined by department kind of reputation, working with individual teachers around everything from as formal as helping young persons work in their presenting to their own students. I've done some post-teaching models for our teachers. I created doc materials. I've also been doing things like help teachers find a guest speaker for teaching the first time or creating materials for the art department around better teaching cultural appropriation and symbolism with it through the material. Additionally, I've done a lot around community education. So making sure students also understand this long game of culture, community, and symbolism. So one example of that is, you can see on the top left of there, and it's right here as well, a process for updating names and pronouns for any students that identify as transgender or non-binary. That was a document that went out gap-wide in our school and a lot of other schools have done the updating as well. Just to create a streamlined process for students and staff alike to understand that process open from the what our constraints are as a public institution and what our obligations are as a public institution. Finally, similar to the Title IX, the Title IX investigator sort of consortium collaborative, I also am working with six other districts that do the equity end of this work. So the CBI first, the equity inclusion end of this work around preventations, cultural competencies, including Portland with plans of religious working model, leading to this restaurant MCI. So it's just been a really good sort of month. We've been trying to share materials, help prevent at each other's school. Just a really good way for us to be really intentional and talk through the ways in which our demographics are similar and are either different as well. Finally, is prevention. So the best work around doing this investigative work is again remedying the facts and preventing, you know, discrimination in future. So we created lots of avenues for increased census of reporting. That's been really successful. We have on the left-hand side upper, that's a screenshot of we have all the television monitors in the building. So there's perpetual slides of how this works. These shiny new things, these are magnetized flyers that are in all of the bathrooms stalls. I adopted this from University of Maine. You remember seeing these when I was in grad school there. And lots of other ways, we emailed all students, faculty, and staff to make sure they're aware who I am. Teachers have been really helpful with having me pop into their classroom and introduce myself at the beginning of the quarter. Similarly, I jumped in and met with a lot of student clubs, were both working with them proactively around something that we might just introducing myself. So it's been a really helpful with people to know. So I'm sort of thinking about the long term, the long game. Where do I envision this role evolving into? So in addition to sort of the investigatory work, which is here to the day, also the, you know, the resource, student, faculty support. The two other circles on the left and right side are what are really interesting to me. And now that I have a WAP, I can step in on to settle into this role. And what I think would be really helpful to sort of build upon, I have a good rough summer homework to commit myself to. So really building community collaborations and partnerships is really important. When I started developing a directory of organizations that I already have working relationships with, or I built relationships with and by extension to this whole, and also community leaders across the board, nonpartisan, bipartisan, researchers, academics, community leaders. In essentially every, every aspect of diversity, you know, diversity will be built on a whole lot of different things. So really creating a good breadth of folks to work with our students and our staff feels like a good thing for me. And similarly, it's strategic planning, so thinking long term in terms of. So sort of thinking long term in terms of what are things that we could really be doing to again, to keep the faith of Bangor of being a community leader in the state. So some of the strategic goals that I set for myself, and we'll see how these things evolve and when I see, if I see, what becomes priority more than others. But data collection, I'm forever a student and researcher, so better collecting data and better aligning that data to understand what kind of work can be done and should be done. One example of that, one of our English teachers, it was definitely a fantastic advocate of my work over the past, also the economic status dynamic property absenteeism. And she's data-driven and that was sort of a person that really inspired me to be thinking more about how we manage data and how we utilize data into one core family gathering or student gathering. What aspects are most important to them, what most affect them both for their roles as students and their roles when they're not students? And what their faith is. Similarly, figuring out how we can again, network with other districts, how we can, you know, be perpetually on top of when policies and laws change or expect the Title IX regulations to come down. Everyone estimated that for November 15th here under the Biden administration. Now that I feel fairly confident with the regulations that were in place in the office, we're likely going to change all over again. So making sure we're on top of that and educating folks perpetually. Finally, really focusing on, and this is still a longer term conversation as all things diversity are, but focusing on recruitment and retention and what that looks like and how we can sort of drive, you know, the culture team. So really celebrating diversity, making sure every student and staff member feels safe, feels included, feels seen, and feels celebrated here in Bangor. So I know I took a lot of information at you. I have no idea how I'm doing this. It's probably, I don't know, we'll see. But that's the gist of what I'm doing. And I'd be happy to field questions or talk more about these things either now or please always follow up with me directly. I'm happy to be a resource and valuable.
Fantastic, thank you.
Number Hyatt, sorry.
So I have a question.
Sure.
I remember. You know, I identify as a gay, and I know there are a lot of people that think all that means that I'm gay or something like that. Now, I'm talking, like, so I've got an article that's by a friend of mine who is a trans representative.
Sure.
Is, if people have a base that, oh, they, I made part of those letters.
All those letters impact one of my dreams is LGBTQ, all of those letters, what they need and how we can evolve with them. So to that, I would say my understanding is the sexual community identified under that LGBTQIA+ umbrella. What I would say to that is you identify, how you identify. And what I would also say is as a fairly boring member of the LGBTQ community, I have a wife in healthcare with my three-year-old at home right now. Having the privilege of working with a lot of our students who are identifying both in Bangor and nationally in increasingly higher numbers by LGBTQ. I am, I'm in my thirties. Our students are telling me terms and things. I have very little idea of their psychology. And I think that's just a testament to the language evolves. Sexuality and gender is one aspect, but even race, right? Race terms that we may have used five or 10 years ago are going to be in now. So I think it's all, for lack of a better phrase, a moving target. And the best we could do is keep that by our students and use all of it. I know that that sounds really specific, answer.
Right, it is fine. Like, so it's the same thing in Bangor. Let's say you have someone that's a trans center. And there's a state, they were, you know, let's say they were born a woman, but they identify as a female. Let's say they, so they, they identify as a woman, you know, that they, that they identify.
Yes.
Okay. So how do we do that while making sure that like, the people that want to, that are happy, that are happy with their current gender, you know, like, who's under their, their, part of the government?
Sure.
How do we make sure the people that identify, like, like both sides? But I don't, I don't like this. I know, like, friends and folks that are hiring to a class.
Thank you.
A lot of them, and I, I don't like setting my goals. So we want to be acceptable back, right? Because Bangor does have a lot of straight ladies, women, and women. But yeah, I don't think we're that much. But how do we, how do we make sure that like?
I want to.
Like, like what I was about to say. And all them. I, I would care, you know what I mean, some of them are on there, but I don't, yeah. But I know some people might care, they might even start fighting, so how, how do we?
That's a great, no, it's a great question.
Sorry, does that make sense?
Yes, it absolutely makes sense. So, so then I would say Title IX gave us a lot of really good insight um, around that very question. I think the two ways that questions of how to back support all students, remember, he gave us kind of standard strength. Um, literally it comes up with the bathroom question and athletics. Um, that was an issue that there was a piece of legislation that came up that was about to go a month ago now, even right to remain. Um, so to the basket, I would say it's our legal obligation to um, allow any student to use the bathroom to which um, they identify with, by gender. Um, including locker rooms, and if a student does not feel comfortable or safe with that, then the student who doesn't feel comfortable can use a single stall or bathroom or a single stall to use. Um, the.
That was the goal, that's what the goal there is.
Transgender and cisgender. So by cisgender, I know that words are complicated. Cisgender means, so I identify as a woman, and I was born a woman, so I'm cisgender, not transgender. Does that make sense?
No, but.
It's okay, we, we could talk about it another time. I have a PowerPoint. One really quick resource that I'm happy to share, this was a question that came up a lot, especially around student athletes. So, when it's coming, I have a one-page, this is what I have, a one-page back and front um, flyer that this one asked all of our athletic staff in every single school building. Um, titled Title IX and transgender slash non-binary student athlete, what any school department staff should know. So this is a really quick resource. I can tell you that the main principles association, which is to return you um, for figuring out these types of things. So, it, it's a really good series of questions. It's complicated. Um, I think at the end of the day, you hit the nail on the head with, you do know that transgender and non-binary students are much higher vulnerable than they were. Students that don't identify as a woman. So students that I may, may say they don't. We know that those students have much higher rates of score outcomes, including, including student's reality. And we also know that there's no higher rate of um, student safety issues um, by allowing transgender students to share spaces with their peers. So, things like this, this is, I guess, part of my job as a short answer is when we have tough questions, um, I, I'm happy to be the policy person to get into them, figure out what our stated legal obligations are, stated federal, um, and how it aligns with our policies, and give people like, the digestible version of the eight thousand pages.
Yeah, I like that. You are really good work. I think we had five years ago.
Thank you.
We came up with a lot of.
Thank you. Number Sork.
Uh, real, just a real quick comment. I just wanted to say, first of all, thank you for this, and thank you being here. I'm so glad, well, I mean, it's just. Any year.
And thank you all for having me, I'm glad to be here.
It's, it's really nice to have a expert. It's there, your expert.
Oh. Thank you. I would say, I mean, one thing I just, I really want to make clear is um, this is stuff that gets me up early in the morning, waking up late at night. Um, I more can any one person that I know exists embody all aspects of diversity, so what I really, there's a lot of this stuff that I um, have studied and practiced and understand the, the policy implications of that. I'm one person, so what I really look at this role as, is bringing the right people to the table. I have students come in um, with a whole lot of life going on, and a whole lot of feelings going on, and I will, I always tell students, if I'm not the right person for you, I promise you're the right person. That, that, I look at this all as a connective role, not a meaningful, we all have a source called, but they feel.
Number Sork.
I don't, I'll sit, I'll stand back. That's brilliant, like they fixed them finally. They worked. Um, I'm okay.
Can you give me that? I can.
Oh, great, good.
You have a teacher voice.
Yes, I am a teacher, retired.
I know.
Oh, sugar. Oh, that's a little name, that's sugar. All right, a question for you, and like Tim said, I'm very thankful to do this job. For years, Bangor has had principals been part-time, part-time here, part-time there, so finally putting all the teachers together is a good thing. My question, and I'm looking at all this that you're doing and everything, do you ever get, I've got a couple of questions, ever get an opportunity to teach a class, especially to freshmen at Bangor High, on diversity and equity? Because I think that's an age that, and I think even eighth grade is an age that we need to hit where they're so impressionable with the wrong things as well as the right things. And speaking from um, very raised, two kids and grandchildren, it's very important that they know an educational component, like when a student mixes up and says something or does something inappropriate, we have a tendency to come down on that kid, slam him hard, and we say, okay, we're going to suspend you. But we forget a very important thing, we forget to teach that kid why they're wrong, why they're wrong. So I would like to see us put an educational component into this as well for maybe middle school and freshman and high school to give us some growth. I mean, Bangor's an old, main community. I grew up in Southern Maine years ago. I used to march in civil rights marches out in the Midwest in Ohio where I went to college. I marched women's rights also, so I'm very much an advocate of right and wrong. Uh, but I also am also an advocate of education. So I'm going to say, let's have you push, get in there and educate, get clients or something that we can put on diversity and equity, since you're a very good employee.
I was going to say this would probably be a longer conversation, Dr. Eric, no, I appreciate that, and I would even say this separately, that if, if our students are coming in the high school, um, and this is the first that are hearing about this, um, we've got a problem, and I'm happy to report that's not the case. I think you should always be doing more and infusing this kind of curriculum, because at the end of the day, I believe that diversity, equity, and inclusion is an ethical imperative. You don't have to, no one has to. But the research shows, and I hate to be that person, but the research points to you have better um, physical outcomes, business outcomes, um, better collaboration when you bring diverse people to whatever the, the table is, right? Um, so having this infused into our curriculum, it, it, it's one to academic excellence, it's one to social emotional colors. It, it, it's infused everywhere, and it really sets our students up to be those global leaders, right? So it's, I mean, I know I don't really need to sell anyone into on, on the role of this, but I think it's, it's critical, it's, it's so important, and definitely it's not tough. This is tough work. We could all see on social media how um, two people of diverse political backgrounds might fight on your Facebook wall or something. You know, so this is stuff that, it, you know, particularly if we look at the past year and past, some of these issues that we deal with, you know, it is very heightened, but I can just, that it's time to recognize that our students aren't leaving their feelings and their experiences until the big world recognizes them at the door. They bring it in, so it's, it's an opportunity to equip them to be those leaders. So I, I call it.
Thank you, number Sork.
You're welcome.
Number Hasenan.
Okay, so I have a couple of comments and a couple of questions as well. First of all, thank you. This was very, very informative and wonderful. Um, and for those of you who may not know Dana very well, she's full of life, she's amazing. And you just, you pull people in. We, I agree with some of my colleagues here that this is all overdue. So thank you. We appreciate you for what you know. Having said that, um, I guess, um, I agree with number Sork about doing diversity, like the DEI component, but I, I worry about spreading toothed them. I already feel like you're kind of all over the place, and I feel like your role is like a hundred people all up in one. I think you'd probably agree with me. So, how do we, as a committee, delegate kind of this work? You know, I would love the educational component, because I think that's extremely necessary for our students. You know, um, saying derogatory terms, being defensive, being um, racist or rigged it, or you know, whatever the case may be. Some of them don't want, don't get it, they don't understand. Of course, there are those who deliberately do that, but regardless of the situation, they need that education. So I would love to have you do more of that, but what about the Title IX piece too, the reporting piece? So that's imperative as well. So I feel like two big things, I think this is probably a discussion with um, Mr. Tager when he comes in, long-term, exactly, because I keep thinking about that.
Yeah.
Um, and I don't know if you have ideas about that, or?
Yeah, so I mean, I, I mean, one piece that, I mean, I can be more careful, I did this. Um, one investigation, a larger scale one, pulls, will pull me out of the game with all of the proactive work. And then, quite frankly, there have been weekends where, um, I had to reschedule working with the department because something comes up, um, and if it was a larger scale, big one, which thankfully has not occurred yet, but hopefully never will, um, I mean, that's ready to lead from all the training that I'm involved with. I've been prepared for something that can be full-time for four months, second coming, right? So, if that's, that's only be a lot of ongoing conversation, um, with the folks in this building. Um, similarly, I think what, what's really helpful is, you know, because I'm one person, and because we already have a whole lot of talent in this school department, believing on, on other folks, so it's a colleague, I believe he was here two weeks ago, Dr. Adam Lee, who I know has been introduced, um, where we, I believe the pilot year we're doing with our program, Human Rights, um, that I'm on that, that PLG, so we, PLG will be starting. Professional. I'm already with the working group, um, with, with that, so I think that Human Rights perfectly encompasses the work that I do. Um, and it, it's a really great curriculum. I'm really excited to work on one of these all day next one day to go over that. Um, so, but I think that I'm more than there, because there were speaking to a lot of different people, a lot of people, especially since, you know, DEI is such a term now. Um, like anything, like, so any, any, like feminism, there's a hundred different, I mean, some of which don't agree, and that's a good thing. Um, so, long-term, I can increase of where the proactive ends and the reactive starts and vice versa. Um, seeing how this involves, I mean, there's so many ideas I have floating around, you know, more education, or um, you know, recruitment or retention, you know, the packets, almost on a human resources perspective, there's so many aspects of this that um, seeing how it evolves and grows, and hopefully for other schools departments, uncomfortable, academic, picture joint, um, it's a good starting place. So recognizing that what has been the worst, that on average, institutional change occurs about five percent a year. I think we won't have that quickly here, so um, we'll figure it out, and we'll figure that together. And I jumped on board with, with this position, um, in this space that we're all in it for the same reasons, and we're committed, and seeing how it evolves with something I'm comfortable with, and I think, um, my supervisor, Dr. Bo, like, and all, will just open that.
Absolutely, thank you for that.
Thank you.
You know, I know the DEI realm is just so deep, you know, and I would love for you to kind of focus on that a lot, but
I know.
That's another conversation. Um, in terms of, you said that there are increased avenues for reporting. What does that look like for those, for parents and, you know, people watching that do not know what that means?
Sure, so um, the tip, um, in, I think all the supplies, the, the, so we can say that, literally, these are around the school now. That's sort of the screenshot of on the Bangor app. Um, this little circle, yellow part on the bottom right corner is the supply mechanism for recording. Um, we also have a new platform on the Bangor School Department website. Um, and I could share that my, I think Bangor School Department, you go off a committee into Google, um, right, um, because there was another time I had to report right on the left, right? I mean, just making sure students and the staff and everyone understands who I am and how to find me, and I'm sure there are very few exceptions, um, you know, the, the big ones that you could think of, um, you know, the person that complained that whoever's reporting an issue, they're in the driver's seat. I know a lot of folks are concerned that, you know, this will take them a long way, but I can really leave comment form, be keeping, um, who works at it, experiencing that for buyers of the community, even if I'm received, it's how we do the title work. Uh, so just again, making sure folks really understand who I am, how to find me, and that's also empowering our staff, our teachers, our hall monitors, our the ID years of the school, and that I always tell, especially our students, um, I can investigate, but I don't know, right? So, um, if, if someone comes into my office and says, everyone who's told schools homophobic, which luckily didn't happen, um, what, how, how does one investigate that, right? Everyone is a very big word, so I'm really, really getting to make sure, and luckily at Macbeth Castle, I've had teachers reach out, and the best case scenario is for me to say, thank you so much for letting me know, and that's really good, but no, that's not, that's not a Title IX, and that's not a current faculty thing, there's been much rather than that. Something's been going on for five years, and no one ever has reported. So yes, creating that culture of see something, pay something, like you yourself. Is how I approach this.
And, and that's what I was trying to get, like, a lot of people don't know.
Yeah.
Where to go, who to go to.
And even, I mean, we, we sent out in December, and part of this as well, is the annually sending out student, parent, faculty, Y email, and then also mailers for those who have access to email addresses, um, just to, again, re-announce who I am and how to find me. Um, so doing that, obviously I also have a, um, a orientation packets and enrollment packets for when students arrive to our district, um, not in September. Um, that, we're working on that over the summer, and have, um, Title IX from the faculty, right, and the enrollment.
Number Monja.
Hi, Miss Goldfellow. Um, thank you. That was fantastic. Um, and I'm trying to, everyone else is saying that I'm a little bit different here. We all can shoot, um, to like, four hundred people, that's needed. Um, a couple of things. I just wanted to clarify, remember, I have this, um, what, what struck me too, is that it's important for people to understand that you know, members of the LGBTQ community who experience higher levels of depression, suicidality, when you control, when you take away the, if, if a child feels supported by their family and by their community and by their school, then those high rates go away. So they, they fall back to the baseline, just any other adolescent. So that's why this, this part is so important, you know, I'm just using that as an example, but just creating a culture where kids feel okay, they are, and that they're supported. So, um, I'm grateful to you.
Thank you.
Um, a couple of questions.
Okay.
Um, are you able to share with us, um, how many investigations you have taken on and what's right?
Sure, um, I do have my thoughts in front of me. I think it's about average. Um, I've had, I have a contact log of everything from a complaint, just committee inquiry of, hey, help me navigate this situation, or is this discrimination? Um, it's, it's a fairly, I can be average or below average, and then considering we're in a pandemic here, um, probably throws, throws a number up. It comes, everything from pronoun changes, um, to teachers reaching out and help, um, address this problem. I probably have a video ninety-eight inquiry. Um, how many of those have risen to investigation, less than ten percent? Um, so it's, it's, I can certainly get the numbers and follow this activity via the document. I feel a lot of this, oh, but it's about that. Um, nothing that's aligned by any reason. And again, these issues that come up, um, I think this is not solely Bangor problem, if I could speak candidly, um, I think these are issues that every high school in America, um, is thinking, and making sure our students feel respected and seen as, um, like people believe them, and, you know, being willing to connect them with their very people. So this is another that our school social worker, or principal, or an outside resource, or something, other new work command, I'm, I'm forming, I have not been named partnership, we're responsible, we've been having a lot of work done, because we are not always the right, the right people. Um, so I, I know I'm a bit more specific in this, and I can certainly follow up with that information and give that to them.
That's fine. I was just looking for.
They, yeah, I mean, and again, that number is not, I have done ninety-eight investigations, thank goodness. Um, no, but I mean, in terms of this inquiry, including the, hey, help me navigate how to answer this student about this question, or, um, a student coming in wanting a record change, I think total, I had about ninety-eight. Um, and again, a smaller, much smaller number of that are being investigated. And all complaints were turned into investigations.
Um, yeah, I was just interested in the whole, that's, that's helpful. Um, yeah, I'm aware, you know, that in the past, and I'm really happy to hear you are really kind of broadcasting what the procedures are for filing a report. Um, I know from, you know, we know about the issues with racism last year, and, um, the report that came out showed that, um, policy was not followed during that, that time. So, um, I'm interested in hearing more about what you're doing with teachers, to them, that when they, when they hear something, um, and I know this has happened with the Title IX program as well, when they hear something that's serious, do they know that they are required to report that? And what are you doing to make sure that the teachers really understand that, that they can't just say, oh, you know, that they're not for work?
Sure, so part of our Title IX obligation is under the new rights, so we are basing into that, that first whole year. Um, and I'm developing a Title IX, um, and making sure that, and also want to be accessible on our, right, so, not yet, so, I'm working on that as well. And just, it's a lot of education, so having a whole day of professional development dedicated to, um, to the I issues, and allowing me to have that platform, um, Principal Butler has certainly welcomed me jumping into like, almost every faculty meeting, uh, to really to explain the process. Um, and really, working department by department, um, what of course excited by, alive, was met with every single student, and, um, and really playing process. Definitely a great idea, to really make sure that that's more and often, because it, I know we all basically understand, like, maybe we're recording it. This is one piece of that, and it's a big piece of that. Um, so really understanding that, I think with me being here, with me being in the high school, physically in the high school every day, um, and just getting to know folks in this role, um, it, it's interesting messaging to say, please lean on me for curriculum support and student support and, uh, hope teachers have, um, let me prevent, let me introduce me here soon. But at any point in time, I can and will investigate. It, it's a very tight role, type of, of, um, role, but we're figuring it out together, and I, I've been very happily surprised how quickly I, I truly feel like I'm a member of the Bangor school and Bangor school department community. Folks are figuring this out with me, and we're, we're taking it a day at a time, but I think really, um, again, creating those avenues, creating those relationships, and I think the messaging that's worked best within, um, our teachers is hand it off to me, and the second is hand it off to me, it's not me to figure out what that's the most appropriate way. I'm not always the one to have the right answer, because I'm not an attorney, I'm a doctor, and I'm charging that setting, but, um, that I, I trust. Is that all, a little?
Yes, very much, very much. Um, um, one last question. You mentioned in your presentation that, um, a strategic, a strategic planning process.
Yep.
I know that some other, um, school systems have come up with a DEI strategic plan. Um, is that something that you would consider, or talk with Dr. or Mr. Tager about when he comes?
I love that, yep. And some, some schools are even taking it, um, Indianapolis School Department, um, which is a part of what's served by law. Um, they create a manual report, almost like a nonprofit organization. Um, or it looks like a hybrid between a nonprofit, um, annual, and then like a clearing report for higher education. Um, so creating some sort of a mechanism like that to update, that's really data-driven, I think would be fantastic. Also figuring out, um, how to, you know, evolve our DEI, I think it's been really exciting and very productive here. I know they, I believe you reported that on our, our DEI subcommittee. Um, and figuring out, I think another idea that I'd love to talk through with my chair is having both an outward-facing advisory committee like we've had, that really serves you all. Um, you know, if and when it come up, you have this, you know, immediate resource of community leaders and experts. But additionally, having, um, a working group, I see a lot of models, and maybe have that. Um, you know, Portland has, and Lewis and both have, um, educators of color, monthly meeting. Um, so how do you use different avenues for, to, um, teachers, um, professional staff to, um, really work on these issues internally as well as externally, um, I think would be a really helpful, sort of, tool approach for that. So I think that, I think there's so many avenues we could take with it, um, really following the lead of what Mr. Tager wants is, is exciting, and it's how we collaborate, I'm very excited for it.
Kind of all the, the, the questions I had were answered, but I did want to take the opportunity to thank you for the presentation and the work that you're doing. I think a year ago, when we, we looked at this position and the investment in it, um, certainly, the information you're providing us and the steps you're taking, surely been a great return on our investment, and part of that is, I think, the energy you bring with it. Uh, would you make it, uh, um, I, I would, if I was a student in the school, I would say that the guard is down, like it's not, oh my god, I gotta go sphere. Uh, I'd want to go sphere, whatever other discussions, so thank you for your work, and the energy, and what you're doing for the high school and the rest of the town.
Thank you.
Yes, number Hasenan.
Uh, question I brought. Um, and this just occurred to me, to ask me a little bit about, um, not complaints, but inquiries about, uh, like, that things, gender pronoun changes, and how does that look in terms of records to records and look at bodies?
Absolutely. So, this is so great that I can keep thinking of. So I, I created this process for names and pronouns updates, and I'll leave all of this with you. Um, but essentially, it was, what our obligation is, is to honor names and pronouns, and she can take, change back, um, whatever is important to them. I make it really clear that when we can update any combination of infinite campus, um, you know, our internal database, and the Google speech, so what their name comes up on their email address and in their video chatting, um, I make it really clear that we take that seriously as, as a team and as a community, so if they're not ready for their parents or, and to know, then there's a bigger conversation we can have. Um, once a student does find that any of those updates are the right fit for them, um, I then send an email to their team, so their current teachers, um, their principal, their principal, guidance counselor, uh, social worker, if it's applicable, I E P for me, or if it's applicable, and the school nurse. Which is a really important component that we've learned, and we can be taught. Um, and just give them an update. I have an update about the student, um, the student is now to be, you know, now to be addressed as a student. I make it really clear that marking on these students of any identity, they're, they're alarmed like every other student, they're, they don't necessarily, unless it's an empowering experience for them, they don't need to teach, um, that's what we're here for. So, I make the point of saying, if you have any questions about how we use this name or pronouns, it would be fun to ask the student, if you need absolutely any questions, big or small, answers about pronouns or gender identities, come to me. Um, and then the last piece, the students have the, the right to, um, accept or decline by reaching out to their parents on your path. But again, the students, I expect, they, their record, we're going to honor that, so I make it clear, I have me to hand off the awkward conversation and let me do it if you want, or if not, you're going to have to do that at some point, and I'd rather not be when your mom gets a confused email, or someone gets a phone call or sees an, a piece of mail that were first for students that they didn't know they had, okay? that they didn't know they had, or please, um, so, oh my goodness, of the students that have updated records, I would say ninety-plus percent of them have had, they've been finding them making the phone call. Um, and I think overwhelmingly, parents, even if that's new to them, um, parents can just really predict that if there's someone helping their student, not maybe, um, it's not perfect, but that sort of is that, again, fine line of respecting family decisions, respecting our legal obligations to our students, and also recognizing what we can't do, so we cannot update, um, department of education legal records, your parents have to have their legal name and designation, whatever there is, so sort of making that, that balance is, is perfectly in perfect.
So that, that would have to go through legal.
Yes, yeah, yeah, yeah.
In school?
In school, yeah. Yep, and we can, we can't update whatever, and if she wants their name updated, and so they have to develop legal processes, we can refer them to the company, which I have, um, but we.
And community members can ask more questions? So, it's going to get, yeah, I always send them to you, but you could make that public as well in terms of phone calls?
Of course, yeah, and there's even two different organizations, either being that do, and there's a bunch nationally that do, um, name, name change legal fund, because it's a, I do, process, so um, yeah, that's something I absolutely want to touch on. Yeah, well, again, please, or actually, there's a follow-up that I'm hoping to help.
So let's say you have, um, a student that comes from like, you know, a religious family, let's say a Christian or a Jewish family, and um, you know, you call parents up and you form the, you know, there's changes going on, and the parent's like, no, that's not going to happen, and we, you cannot, my child is pissed, how, 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 does that, like, you ever had that, and how would it happen if their parent didn't want their, they believed that their, their child's, how does that work?
That could certainly happen, I mean, the best way is.
Does that happen, you get it before?
Yeah, oh yeah, yes.
And how you handle that?
Yeah, and it also caught, and then we'll get this, um, outside of Bangor, um, so it's, as the parents' conversation before, in terms of a K-12 setting in a public school, it is our legal obligation to honor, um, students or clients for the names and pronouns that they identify with. And so I really explaining that to parents, that we, we would, we would be facing potential litigation if we did not do that, and also if, if, if that's active in terms of the social emotional needs of our students, so, and really just also recognizing this helps that, uh, I, I am a parent also, um, so recognizing that this is a bigger conversation, that if we can help provide resources for a family to navigate, we're happy to, but um, in terms of what a student wants to be called, and how this student wants to be addressed in our school, we have a legal obligation to fulfill those wishes, and understanding that whether it's a faith-based concern or something else, um, recognizing that that might be hard on supporting families, because we're not just in the business of supporting students, but their whole families and their communities, um, luckily, that's very in frequent, I think overwhelmingly, if a parent's like, what do you mean gender identity, or they're very well versed, um, knowing that their kid is supported like any other kid, um, seems to be overwhelming in how they're approaching themselves.
So, and that's, that's good, so what happens when you do get conflict, because all it takes is like one type of, you know, situation where, you know, say you, you know, you know, you know, nine out of nine, nine times out of thousand, it works, but that one time where that, that student decided they were just about their family, that student, so therefore, like, um, um, Claire said, about how, when they don't have the acceptance um, by their community, you know, that's where the, the rate's of suicide depression, but if they do have acceptance, you know, I mean, they're a baseline like everybody else, so, I mean, because all it can take is that trigger to be caused on.
It's, it's prevent, like, in a preventative measure, right? So it, it, you know, really getting to know that student that is potentially interested in going through this process, and saying, how, how is this conversation going to go at home, and explaining that, and if the conversation is really, really not good, um, the, the best, most common form thing to do would be to never push a student to come out if they don't want to, or if they don't feel safe for them, and losing family or potential, um, housing insecurity are, they, beautiful things, right? So overwhelmingly, um, supporting students that if they want to informally be called something at school, um, but not have it be a formal change in their record, that that's a really good alternative to avoiding that very unhappy conversation. So, and my sense is really helping through the tools with students has avoided it heading that coercive narrative.
Thank you. So I'm going to throw you a, maybe a weak curve on here, because I have a question. Um, so private and faith-based schools, are they under the same legal obligations, um, that we're talking about?
No, um, it's, so Title Nine is applicable to schools that receive federal funding, but right to that is a lot of schools that, um, refuse, um, public relief funding, now have to institute Title Nine, uh, which is a side mix team for a lot of institutions here, so there's suddenly, even training that, that we've been, I, I've been doing, um, so it is, it, it's different, right, and that's, any parents who, like, some have teachings of this stuff, might, might go that route. Um, I mean, students don't lose their rights when they walk in the door of some institution, but public schools is a, a different, so in terms of what our public responsibility is to be really protected, that's, uh, a, and it becomes, for us, is how our policy is free, is, is how we instituted, um, in Bangor, I think very specifically, I remember a whole bunch of them, I thought, given that we're mainly, um, pretty.
Yes, because I understand that there's some legislation that's pending in the main state house to put public funds towards some religious education, and I don't know how much people realize that when that happens, they then are, they are obligated to do exactly what we were talking about today, and that, that could be some size matters.
Oh, geez.
Size of the changes for some of these school districts that are likely, you want me to do it?
Right, and the question of how well, and how these students get included is a whole other question, I mean, Title Nine, I, I think the ideal scenario is a cross trained team of eight people that only do Title Nine, and I mean, I think you're, well, again, like, thank you all, beautiful, is, um, the positions like mine, so standalone positions that do, um, this type of work are emerging, um, I've seen some models, and I've done a lot of digging, and we work in that too, which is my awful West Coast, but this is the first, um, standalone in the state of Maine, um, which is exciting, and I think I'm the only person that does both the proactive and the reactive, and that's the Title Nine of the American Working Group and the equity coordinator working group, um, and they're, they're not the same people, or the same team, but again, I think it is, you know, having the infrastructure is both that preventative type of work we just want to do, and also protecting our students, protecting our communities, and protecting our district, make sure that we're being compliant, but really, they can all, um, be still.
So thank, thank you for identifying my next question, because then that provides me with the exact opportunity to say, for anybody who is considering where they should send their children to school, you've just heard the words, that we have the only coordinator in the state of Maine, so yet again, Bangor is a leader in the state, and so I am incredibly proud of the work you're doing and the work that this, this school committee here made to make this happen, um, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you to all of us.
Thank you. Thank you for your time, I know I think I pride on it, I don't need to apologize for whatever that time.
That's fine. That's great.
Do you want to, I can leave them a second right here?
Please, please do, thank you.
And I think you did like five of each, but I sent some off to you to. If anyone wants a really fancy gift basket for your friends, there's one there for the two.
Uh, fantastic, thank you so much. Um, okay, so we are now onto the P C H C school health.
I know we're trying to say, this was Dr. Webb's vision to give this, so.
Yeah.
Thank you, Dr. Webb.
Um, I would like to thank the committee of the P C H C, um, school-based health clinic. Um, P C H C has asked the school committee to consider approving the school-based health clinic, even if they do not get the grant. Um, they're proposing to do all renovation work and staffing with their own funding. Um, they're asking this because the best time to do construction in this school is during the summer. The grant did not provide funding for construction, so with an assurance that we would support the student-based health clinic construction could start this summer. However, I did not bring this to you for a vote this evening, because I'm still gathering a little bit of information, um, but I wanted you to prepare for a possible vote on the June twenty-third school committee meeting.
Thank you.
Um, and the report of resignments? Um, there are four resignments for the twenty-one, twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two school year, um, Eva Marks from kindergarten teacher Abraham Lincoln School to grade three teacher at Fruit Street School. Um, and then the report of, of resignations. A reporting, following resignations, Matt Lonsbury, history teacher Bangor High School, Emily Hurson, grade three teacher Fruit Street School, Anne Marie Roberts, point two-five I E P coordinator at Fourteenth Street School, Sarah Vickers, point five I E P coordinator at Fruit Street School, and Cynthia Howard, point five special Olympics coordinator District One. Let's take Anne Marie Roberts, Fourteenth Street.
Thank you.
And a report of resignations.
Those were the resignations?
Oh, those were the, no, thank you. Okay, um, the quick clarification, so they're resigning from these, they're resigning from these positions, because they're no longer employed in Bangor.
Oh, well.
The, the first two would not be employed in Bangor, the first two are just, um, resigning a partial, um, an extra piece of what they do.
Okay, excellent.
So we are, um, we wish both Matty and Emily the best of luck, and Meredith Evers, and um, the other three, uh, the work you can continue to do in Bangor. Uh, this is actually, um, I'm recommending approval of the draft minutes of the May twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-one regular school committee meeting. Any motion?
Second.
Discussion, and all those in favor? I'm recommending approval of the April twenty-twenty-one financial report. Any questions?
Thank you.
Discussion, seeing none, all those in favor? This is a process, uh, personnel. I'm recommending the following teacher nominations for the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two school year with a one-year probationary contract. Sarah Smith, grade four, Mary Snow School, Danae Johnson, point five pre-K teacher at Vine Street School, Mallory Hurson, school counselor at Fruit Street and Abraham Lincoln Schools, Casey Falcon, grade four teacher at Fairmount School, Corey Fleming, nine-twelve special education teacher at Bangor Regional Program, Jessica Custka, K eight special education teacher at Bangor Regional Program, Tamara Shira, K eight special education teacher at Higa Educational Program, and Tracy Reeran, special education teacher self-contained at Fourteenth Street School. Second, and discussion, all those in favor? All those in cases? Um, do we have, was it nominations for teachers and administrators? So I'm recommending the following administrator nomination for the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two school year with a one-year probationary contract. Uh, Mr. May, who is up on the street, has taught at all grade levels, pre-K, elementary, middle, and high school, he has a lot of expertise in working with learners with multiple disabilities and challenges, he holds a bachelor's degree in history and secondary education, and a master's in special education and instructional technology, he also is completing his master's in educational leadership, one month away. I have observed Mr. May have teaching, believe that we are fortunate to have him as a candidate for the position of director of Bangor Regional Program. And with the discussion, uh, Mr. May, would you like to say hi?
Hello, everybody, thank you so much for inviting me.
Um, and anything you'd like to share with the committee?
I just love the opportunity to continue working in a new capacity, uh, in Bangor uh, school district, I, I've worked here for the last few years, and as I said through all of my interview process, I've never felt more supported than I have working in the Bangor school district, and I'm very proud to be a member of the, the department.
Okay, thank you very much, so.
Thank you.
All those in favor? Who's in the process? Well, our official welcome.
Thank you. Thank you so much, I'm so happy.
Well, we look forward to meeting you and working with you and, and getting some wonderful updates.
Absolutely, likewise, thank you again.
Thank you, yes, it's a fantastic program over there. Um, my, mine cuts off here, so, we have, is, is this the other one? Okay, donations? Number three, thank you.
To James Dowdy School on the B M T Fund in memory of Danielle Thompson, a cash donation to benefit students, having a total dollar value of three hundred.
Twenty. Second, second. Discussion, um, all those in favor? With incredible thanks, uh, for your generosity, uh, we have some introduction items. So I'm recommending the first reading of revised policies, policy G D B dash five, one J compensation guide, revised policy G D B dash six, executive office compensation guide, revised policy G D B dash seven, support staff compensation guide, revised policy G D B dash eight, adult and community education compensation guide, revised policy G D B dash nine, supplemental compensation guide, and revised policy G D B dash ten, educational technology staff compensation guide. These revisions reflect the changes needed to accommodate the earned pay leave legislation and increases in pay. I propose we take these as approved, is everybody in favor of that? Okay. Second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Thank you. Um, committee updates, so comments and questions from the committee? Uh, member Hussam.
Um, I was just wondering about, um, graduation plans, everything in, in the folder.
We're still planning on staying Sunday, uh, but I don't know, Principal Butler, do you want to add anything to this, please? It's weather, you're, you're on you.
Hear me?
There we go.
Yeah, I've been a weather hawk, right? I'm the, uh, I'm the English major-turned-meteorologist, uh, in the middle of May, as we started, we, I mean, it takes a bit of a courage and leap of faith to have an outdoor graduation, and, um, thought the time and the venue were right, uh, I, I won't take credit for it, but spot-on in terms of, um, the way things have played out, in the, the way in which the, I, I think the quality of the experience of graduation will, will be felt by, by, uh, families on the thirteenth, but we did start looking at weather, we had a lot of confidence, that confidence got shaken about a week and a half ago, when the weathermen told us that, um, we might have showers midday on Sunday, um, Todd Simcox is assured to be able to last three mornings in the Channel Five early morning report, that, that the weather has shifted into Monday, that rainy weather, and, uh, feel confident that it'll be no more than seventy degrees, uh, the ground will be dry, the ticks will all be chased away, and it'll be nothing but beaming smiles and happy, comfortable people for graduation on the high school campus on the thirteenth. I told superintendent that moving forward, um, I would like to gain the committee's confidence, and maybe the thirteenth will be the day when we all feel really good moving forward, uh, about an outdoor graduation at Cameron Stadium, field's coming together nicely, and have taught. And have talked to our vendor, who's done a lot of work at outfitting us with the seats and the, you know, co-urchments for a good outdoor event. Shifting that plan over to Cameron. Looking ahead to having a Saturday versus a Sunday, which has been our tradition, a Saturday graduation with a Sunday rain date. Again, early to middle June as the calendar falls. So totally confident. Feel there's no need to consider an adjustment to the date, which is a policy decision. And would invite the committee to think about that idea of outdoor graduation, Saturday rain date, Sunday, in years moving forward.
Excellent. Thank you very much for that update.
We would like to give a credit to Principal Butler, as well as Heather Hopkins and Hannah Cushing. They have done a phenomenal amount of work to make this happen and make it special for everybody. I know there's a lot of other people that have been in the process too, but these three people have worked tirelessly on this, so.
Thank you. Dr. Hassan, did you give everybody an update on the federal funds? Do we have any?
I think the update is we have nothing.
Oh, we have nothing yet. It is still relatively the same as what I reported before. There's some delay at federal level in what they're asking us to do for the grant process. So made it a two-part grant process. I have successfully been accepted. All the information I put in for the first part, and now I'm just waiting for the second part to open up. I've been talking with Dr. Tager, Mr. Tager. And luckily, we were already talking. And developing plans for the use of that fund, so.
So much for that.
Working on it as soon as it opens.
I will say the rescue fund should be coming to cities and school districts. I know the county, we got...we're getting $30 million. We just got the first 50% of this first year. Second, it's under $15 million. We got it to the county treasury, so. I'm told that...I'm told that it's funded to the city.
That'd be good.
Excellent. Thank you for that. And okay, so then we are moving on to representative reports. And we need Member Mondell. Why don't you have one?
Yeah. Oops. Sorry. Just making sure everybody's awake. Yeah. Yeah, I had a spruce meeting on Thursday, maybe the 27th. It was right after this meeting, the day after this meeting. And Director Gavin gave a really great presentation on all the programs that they run.
So we had our final DEI committee meeting on the fourth, which was last Friday. Dana, that's the helm of that. And she did such a great job. We had...was a four or five projects. Four, four projects. So that we broke into subcommittees, what you want. And then the four subcommittees gave their final presentation of their projects. And it ranged from anywhere from like library... Like a library project to... Making it more diverse. To updating the DEI websites. To checking in with different districts to see what their DEI work looks like. So I think amazing work was done in such a short time. And we are looking forward to seeing this on board next year.
Thank you very much. Any...yes? Yes?
I had a question, Member Mondell, on the spruce meeting. Was there a vote taken on leadership on this superintendent?
Yes, and I could have mentioned that. There was a vote on the continuation of Dr. Webb as the Director. And there was...yeah, there was a vote. It was voted yes. I abstained. I understanding that the Bangor Superintendent was to be in that role. And the fact that Mr. Tager is coming on July 1st. I was confused by that vote, so I abstained, but everyone else voted yes, so.
Your extension was... The reason for your...why you didn't vote yes?
Because it was my understanding that that position is supposed to be taken by either Bangor Superintendent. And I didn't see the nature extended because it had already been voted on, and then we got that vote. So I was just confused by the vote. I didn't feel like I had enough information to make a knowledgeable decision about that.
Well, I'll share with you that I feel that was a failed representation of this committee to not vote in favor of someone that worked for the district for 15 years and 12 years in leadership as a superintendent. Brought the spruce program to Bangor. Has been key instrumental in the development of the spruce program and the success of the spruce program. Her leadership as an educational individual in the state is of the utmost integrity. She's worked at the university name as a trainer, educator, and future leaders. And some of this represented us at such a high level for so long. I just don't understand the confusion of what happened, so yes.
Well, I appreciate your turn to that. What am I... My understanding is that the director... This is a position that should be led by a superintendent. And she is no longer a superintendent. So it didn't seem appropriate to me to have her in that position. I understand why she's there. She's brought in many years. But there was no statement in the vote about the fact that she's... That's why I was...knowing that it was coming in a month. I didn't understand the reason for that vote. And I was a little concerned about, you know, my interest is for the Bangor School Department. And I think we have an interest in keeping that program under our management. So my concerns, like I was sort of like, wait, what is happening here? It was just very confusing. So I didn't vote no. And I could have, but I abstained because I didn't feel like I had enough information. And I was frankly a little bit, felt a little bit blindsided by that vote.
If you didn't realize the vote was going to take place?
I knew that there was going to be a vote. But all it said on the agenda was, um, leadership to be voted on.
Well, a fitness of the optics of abstaining from supporting someone who's done so much for the district for the spruce program is a failure, I think. And how I feel, the committee should have been represented.
Well, I have to disagree with you. It wasn't so much about the person in the position. It was confusion about why we were in the bylaw state that is supposed to be a superintendent. So why are we voting for someone who's not a superintendent?
So, and I'm going to jump in here really quick. I think since we've already made a vote for Daniel Mayo to be the new leader of that program, that this is probably a really good moment and lesson that, you know, anytime that there's potentially a confusing vote, because we want to maintain the optics, you know, the support that... To reflect the incredible work that Dr. Webb did, but also understanding that as a new member, kind of being blindsided by a vote and not quite knowing what that means. So, Mr. Mayo, we are going to really be counting on you. So, thank you. Are there any other committee?
So regarding, I remember the student committee, but if there are guidelines or bylaws that kind of break down, how would it change to something else?
So what happened was, Dr. Webb had always served, obviously. And when I took this position over, I felt that I wasn't in a good position to be able to do it. I mean, she draws the information. And so it was asked if she would continue on. And I readily agreed. And then there's another transition. And Mr. Tager probably doesn't understand the bylaws and things like that. So she would be able to continue in the position and train him to be able to take that over.
So that's... If I could just clarify? Yeah, and if I can just clarify, that was my understanding too, based on conversations I had when I was not the first member. But the vote was not...there was no mention of a transitional period for Mr. Tager to be trained. So that was...that was my understanding.
I think fortunately, because we have Mr. Mayo on board here, I think he's gotten this message loud and clear that we'll have to be really clear with that to make it as easy as possible since it's the subcommittees. Thank you. Are there any other committee updates? Yes, Member Mondell?
I can just make one more comment about your comment about optics, number one. So I think there's also optics around when there's a unanimous vote. There, that's an optic also. And I think when someone doesn't necessarily go with everyone else, that there's a sense that we are thinking about things and taking our job seriously. And, you know, I don't think that it... Being a good member necessarily means everything.
Second?
I'll leave it at that. This was discussed before you went in for your attitude on whether to vote yes for someone that has served the state, the district, and the region so well. If you...optics of unanimous vote? Sure. They have...I'm concerned about a unanimous vote because we just remember scampering it. This was an opportunity for pretty simple a yes vote, in my opinion, for someone that served spruce in us very well. And I'll leave it at that.
Okay, so I'm going to move on to informational items. We have important dates of Sunday, June 13th, which is graduation at 4:00 p.m. at Fields at Bangor High School. And I do want to make sure that we congratulate all of those graduates. Four years of really hard work. Monday, June 14th, we have the first reading of the school budget with the city council. Wednesday, June 23rd, we have a regular meeting here at 7:00 p.m. in the council chambers. Monday, June 28th, second reading of the school budget with the city council. And Wednesday, July 21st, regular meeting at 7:00 p.m. council chambers. Are there any other final questions or comments from the committee? Is this something that is brand new that you want to talk about? Or do you want to do... Okay. If it's something new, then that's lovely. But if we're going to go back, I prefer if we could just move on.
I just, in defense of Member Mondell, I had only stepped down from spruce the day before. I was scheduled to go to that meeting. And so I think that, you know... You know, I think that the question of a number of members' vote is kind of out of order. I just, you know, I mean, had I gone there, I probably would have maybe embarrassed everyone even more. I'd be doing more. But, you know, so I...you know, again, she didn't have much lead time going into that. You know, I was scheduled to be at that meeting. But, you know, I stepped down at spruce just the day before that meeting. So I didn't have a lot of time. If I was not aware of that, you know, she would be taking my spot.
Thank you for that, Member Igo. So I am going to call... Oh, is this about something completely different?
Yes.
Okay, fantastic. Go for it.
I believe that three of our members have graduated seniors. Is that correct?
Ah, yes.
Just want to offer congratulations. A great moment for you and your families and your children. And I hope you have a wonderful day and it's not rained on. But that's what umbrellas and blind shoes are for, so even if it is. Congratulations and enjoy the day.
Thank you very much. We really appreciate that. I'll never say that.
Yes, I did have a prepared statement I wanted to read tonight. Tonight, I'd like to share a prepared statement aimed at recognizing and thanking many of the educators who made this school year successful for my family and the families of so many others. In the early summer of 2020, I phoned former superintendent Betsy Webb and asked her with great concern in my voice, would my children be spending their kindergarten school year in front of a computer screen? Dr. Webb responded, "The safety of our students is our first priority. But if we can safely bring them back to in-person learning, that's what we'll do." Incredibly, this Monday, June 14th, our children will have attended 162 out of the 175 of the 2020-2021 school days in person at the Abraham Lincoln School. I want to start by thanking former superintendent Webb Warren Caruso, former school committee member Marlene Suce, and all members of the school reopening committee for all their work during the summer of 2020. Each evening this year, as we ate dinner together as a family, my wife Lauren and I would listen to our children tell story after story about their experiences interacting with Dr. Tennant, their school's principal, Mr. Vanetta Stein and Mr. Beaton, their school's custodians, Mrs. Crayon, their art teacher, Mrs. Campbell, their librarian, Mr. Pennyburn, their physical education teacher, Mr. Jay, their music teacher, and Mrs. McCullough, their guidance counselor. As we listened to their stories, what came across loud and clear was that our children were surrounded by adults who cared deeply about them. As cliche as it sounds, they truly aren't words to express our gratitude to our children's homeroom teacher, Mrs. Carvel. During a year that was always uncertain and sometimes frightening, you created a loving and safe environment where our children and their classmates thrive as they practice the fundamentals of reading, writing, and mathematics. But much more importantly, practice the skills of empathy, cooperation, and kindness. Mrs. Carvel, you represent the very best the profession of teaching has to offer. To all educators in Bangor and everywhere, you, along with our healthcare workers, were the glue that kept society together these past 16 months. Thank you.
Thank you for that, Mr. Serat. And I'd like to congratulate all 262 of our graduates, including my one who went to Abraham Lincoln. And it is truly a glorious, wonderful school, as are all of the elementary schools in our community. Member Hassan?
I would like to congratulate all of my kids here as well graduating. I think they've done such a phenomenal job. They're just the, you know, they're not knowing what we have been experiencing. They've done a phenomenal job too. So many thanks to all of our seniors and all of our students across the district. Couple of questions regarding the second reading of the school budget. City council, do we need to make that a question?
As nice as you are, you don't have to vote.
So I will be there. Now, the devices are seating. I will be in the chat. So... Unless I can take a little tour of me.
Oh, I would like that.
Unless I have technical difficulties. I will have you guys on the table. And I think you can get all my pictures to each other.
Yes.
Is the Monday meeting usually a person-to-person?
No, that's remote. Any people at the city council, so they are not meeting in person.
So with that, any motion?
Some votes?